I'd like to call to order the work session, January 25th, 2021. We are not present, all present. We have Vice Mayor Stip who will not be attending, although he may call in for the, I doubt he's going to do that for the work session. I'm making that assumption. Let me find out.
I suspect he's not on yet.
He's not on yet. Well, I think we're going to go ahead and not wait, okay? All right, we only have one agenda item. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any question. First item is a discussion to provide direction to staff regarding the multifamily vacant commercial corners and industrial development on Bullard from Van Buren to I-10. Development Services Director Christopher Baker, Planning Manager Katie Wilkin, Economic Development Director Lori Gray, whole gangs here, and the Project Manager Harry Paxton. Staff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion with you tonight about three important policy questions. Tonight, Katie, Harry, Lori and I would discuss with you the velocity of multifamily development in Goodyear, vacant commercial corners, as well as industrial development along Bullard from Van Buren to I-10. And we're going to pause between each one of these topics in order to facilitate and have some council discussion and direction. Before we begin tonight, just would like to set some context for the council. As you can see on the chart at the right, industrial construction activity has accelerated quite rapidly in the city of Goodyear to some 8.2 million square feet. There's been more than 9,200 jobs created, and as a result, the city of Goodyear is simply moving and pivoting from being a bedroom community to an employment center as well. What we are seeing in terms of multifamily interest and development is a byproduct of the growth and also the job growth that's being constructed in this or being implemented in the city. This chart here shows single-family permit growth from 2016 through 2020. This is a very healthy curve with no spikes or anomalies, and we're quite pleased with this rapid pace of growth. It clearly demonstrates that the city is a desirable location where we are building a quality community together, where people want to invest, live, and also raise a family.
Katie?
Thank you. So the next few slides are an update of data that we did provide to you back, I think, a year and a half ago now regarding multifamily growth. So in 2015, about 9% of our dwelling units were multifamily dwelling units. Today, with the growth we've had in both multifamily and single-family, that's grown to about 13%. And then if we add in all those developments that are currently either under construction or in development review, we project that in a couple of years, it could be 18% of our dwelling units being in the multifamily category. Last time, we did also give you some information regarding the single-family rental or build-to-rent versus traditional garden-style apartment buildings. And just to provide an update on that data, about 16% of our multifamily units that are built are the single-family rental-type products. And then you can see if we add in those under construction, it's about a quarter, plus those in development review, and then plus those in pre-apps, almost a third of our multifamily units would be the single-family rental-type product. And just so you know, the numbers here are a little different because with the Goodyear data, we have real-time data, but when we compare ourselves to other cities, we have to look at other data sources and it lags behind. This is 2019 Assessor data that this is from. So again, the numbers aren't quite the same as what I just presented. But looking at how we compare to some other cities in the valley currently, with this chart, we'd be one of the cities that have one of the lower percentages of multifamily. And then if our projection came true, you could see the 18%, we'd be somewhere between Peoria and Mesa with the 18%. And again, this also demonstrates that there's not really a right answer with regards to what should the multifamily, single-family mix be. The communities across the valley vary greatly. Also, the other thing I should note too is the cities also change as time goes on. Sometimes one industry sees a boom, such as we're seeing a boom in industrial development in Goodyear, and we're seeing a boom in multifamily. So sometimes, you know, it can be a little off-center for a little while, but then the single-family catches up once you kind of go through that boom time, too. And then we also provided a map of where some of these locations are. Just to give you a general idea, the black being areas where there are existing built multifamily developments. The yellow are some areas where we've had some pre-application meetings but haven't seen a formal submittal. Green are those in the development review process or possibly even under construction. And then the red are areas that have been zoned for multifamily, but they're not necessarily in the development review process currently. But that means they have entitlement to build as multifamily.
So council, that was a kind of a brief overview of this sort of state of multifamily development in the city of Goodyear, what we historically have been, where we see ourselves moving forward based on conversations and pre-apps with the development community. And so we would like just to check in with council here at this point in time and see if you all approach or support our approach to support multifamily growth in the city of Goodyear, as long as it's in concert with the general plan. And then the second part of that question is to see if council has any concerns regarding multifamily along freeways.
Who would like to ask first? Joe?
You know, I personally prefer, if we're going to put anything along the freeway and we can't get retail or commercial there, I'd rather see multifamily there than single-family housing. I believe over time, the traffic's going to get worse. It's going to get louder. If you put single-family homes along the freeway, I think you're just going to discourage it in those neighborhoods. I'm afraid may start on the downslide as a result of that being right next to the freeway. We've heard it now when we were putting in stuff on McDowell, even those homes that were quite a distance away from the freeway complaining about the noise, and it's not even at full capacity now. So I don't have a problem with multifamily, what is it, along the freeway? And I don't know what to say about the multifamily overall because I'm not sure where the saturation point is, you know, is on there. I see 18% potential. That still seems to be on the lower end of some of the others. So I don't think we've hit saturation yet with those things. My biggest concern when we do the multifamily is that its quality, the facades, you know, a little bit of mix-up, little different look, as opposed to all having that gray, tanish look, you know? That's what I would prefer. We get it because the inside has to be able to be sold, you know? So if the inside's not set right, they're not going to fill it, you know? So that, I guess, is on the developer. But the outside, what we see and what the neighborhood is, I'd like to see, you know, and I think we're getting better at some of the design guidelines for that, to mix that up where it's not all one standard price. So that's my thoughts.
I'd like an opinion on that kind of from all of you, on the tone of the outside, the color. I mean, do you like just the beige and the gray, or are you looking? So give them, we need to give them kind of direction tonight.
I don't like everything being brown. I agree with what Joe said about, you know, mix it up when we see some with some architectural elements and along those lines and how we have the single-family units that are houses, but they go into the multifamily category, right?
Yes.
For our 18%? Yeah. So I think that gives a good stock. One thing after we're post-pandemic, because we have a lot of these projects in the, one time when we did the gain events, we went to several of these places. If we could do something like that post-pandemic, I don't want anybody to think I'm talking super-spreeder here, but, you know, I think it would be a good thing, then we can tell people who come to us and have these concerns about, you know, these properties, you know, we've been there. I know a lot of them right now are closed down. You just can't walk in a lot of them. But if we could, as they're coming online before they get a lot of residence, so we could kind of help introduce those, because there's a lot of really, at least what they've been bringing here, they're very nice and very high-quality. And what's our, I do have a question in there somewhere. What is our occupancy rate now?
Mayor, council, that's a great question. We don't keep track of multifamily occupancy rates. However, we did do a little bit of due diligence, and the best information that I have available is between 85 and 90% occupied.
Okay. And I've heard that a two-bedroom is pretty pricey as well for some of these, just online.
Yeah, of course, it varies by individual project.
Service, yeah.
Right, right.
So I think that's something good. And then with the, next to the freeway, I agree with Joe on that. I think if we can get some commercial or something, that's obviously the first. But some of these areas now after the pandemic, we're going to see a decrease, I assume, in how commercial and how retail is going and how office space. So I think we have to be open to change and open for each individual lot. We have to look at that parcel itself and say, is this parcel, you know, better used for commercial, or is this parcel better used and not just a general? So I like the direction you're going. When you have someone who has something, we talk about that parcel. So I think that's a good way to do it, because I can't say a blanket everywhere. But I do agree with Joe's overall kind of high level. If we can't get it, I don't really like single-family there. I agree 100% with that. It's probably not the best choice.
Brandon?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, just like we made, I think, the single-family apartment-type models, is those the ones we made extra colors for? Did we just approve that?
Well, I do want, thank you, yes. But again, we don't dictate colors.
Yeah.
We require three different color schemes, but it's, you know, so far, you know, this is part of why we're having this discussion, so we can get better direction, but we don't force colors upon developers.
Yeah.
You know, we are looking for different color schemes, so they could have three.
And they can, when they're there, you can say, you know, if you thought about this, council would like to see somewhat of a change, you know, and throw it out to them.
Yes.
And if they're going to be competitive, that might be one of the ways that they can be competitive against them.
Yeah. So if I may, just real quick, to Katie's point, with the single-family rentals, if you remember, we created that MF12 district, and we did, I think, we have three different elevations and so architectural styles. To Katie's point, we don't dictate colors. That's up to the individual developers. I can share with you that we push design and colors and so forth quite a bit. So, yes.
So maybe we need to push it from the council end.
I was just.
I think we ought to make a goal of that. Every time they come forth, talk to them about it, you know, not in an angry tone, but suggestive, because actually, they are small, single-family homes. The one I went through is right here, near us. I just forgot the name of it. Harvard? And the interior is well-done, better than some of the other ones. So I was very impressed with it. So, any other comments?
I still got some more.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify. I thought we did change that in the future. So yeah, some variety of those, if there are, is an apartment there, would be nice for the community. And I like Joe's, so we're going off the freeway, and I think the general plan committee, when I was on that, you want a density up against the freeway, and then it kind of scales back away from there. So I think the priority would be, I'd prefer to have commercial, industrial-type things against the freeway. And then from there, it could be, I guess, multi, I would rather not have multifamily right up against the freeways. And then I would like, I mean, and then after that would be the single-story rentals, and then after that would be maybe the housing, but I'd prefer not to have any housing right up against the freeway if possible. But I prefer, I don't know, we can't tell the developers exactly what to do with their land, but I know I prefer not to have the residents up against the freeway, just for future livability and people wanting to be in those places in the future. And then your other question was around, yeah, the percentage? I'm not sure. I mean, I know Mesa's significantly larger, and Chandler significantly larger, and Tempe is a college town, so we don't have those things going on with our percentages. So I don't know, also to Joe's point, I don't know what the right percentage is, or if there is a right or wrong answer, really. It probably depends on the city itself. I feel that our residents, every time a new apartment comes up, they don't want, they don't want any more apartments. So at least not the towers. I mean, the other ones, I think they're, people are just confused about the single-story ones. But yeah, I think most, at least the residents I talked to, they're, they don't really, I think their appetite for apartments has been satisfied, but I know there's a demand for people, because we keep, 300 people are coming to Arizona a day, and they need places to go, and we're building these job centers, and in Goodyear, we want people to be able to live near where they work. So the percentage, I know it'll change in 2025. All everybody's numbers will probably change, too. I'm not sure we're going to fall on that scale. But I think, to Sherri's point as well, that taking them on a case-by-case basis is good as well.
Laura?
I am supportive of the staff approach to multifamily growth in concert with the general plan. To Brandon's point, I think anecdotally, we feel a little nervous about the number of apartments and things that come up. I can tell you, in the apartments that are by my house, a lot of the people that I see that leave there are military. I think sometimes there's an assumption that renters are maybe not as preferable as owners, but I think that they do contribute to the community. I talked with Shelby Duplessis, the president of the Empire Group, who built the Harvard, Harvard Commons, I'm not sure which one. She said that the majority of their renters are millennials, and we want millennials to live here. And she, you know, reminded us that these projects, the ones that we're building in Goodyear are high-end projects. These are not entry-level types of apartments. And so, I mean, I think that that's important as well. In terms of apartments next to the freeway, I'm not a fan. Those apartments by the Harley-Davidson are so close to the freeway, exceedingly close to the freeway. I think they were only 100 feet away. It's interesting, when I'm, when you drive on I-10, you can see the second story of those Fulton homes popping up over the freeway. I think that's really an unfortunate thing. So I'm not saying never, ever, but maybe they need to be done designed in such a way that they're just not abutting the freeway in the way that they are. I'm a big fan of some new colors. There is a Maricay project in Palm Valley, with the one they filled the lakes in for, I can't remember the name, but they've got blues and yellows and reds and, you know, all kinds of different colors in their trim, and it's just kind of a refreshing look. It's just not everything brown. I would like to see more court-style homes like the Maricays in the Rio Paseo area. Those have done really well in terms they've sold out. They have nice landscaping, nice kind of village-community feel, and that gives people an opportunity to enter into the home market without buying a single-family home.
Molly?
Thank you. I have no problem with housing up against a freeway, because I have lived in enough different places. I've seen it everywhere in America. It's not that we're any different than anyone else. And a lot of times when they're building these units up close to the freeway, they don't cost as much as some of the other areas, and it's more affordable for folks. And Laura's right, we have a lot of military that rent here in Goodyear, and it is very important that we provide quality apartments for these folks when they come in, because they're here, some of them are here seven months, some of them are here a year and a half or two years, and they do not want to buy a home. They don't want that responsibility, because they're going to be transferred back out. My husband and I did not buy a home until we were assured we were going to be at a base longer than 30 months, because it made no sense to buy a house, and then we would end up losing money. We did it once, and we learned, you don't buy a house when you're PCSing, unless you know you're going to be in a community for at least two to three years, so that you can recoup some of your money back. But that said, I personally think when a developer comes to Goodyear, if they have an idea, we need to listen to them. And if they have something different, we really need to listen to them, because if we don't, they're going to go somewhere else. And it may be something that fits in very nicely with us. And I'm curious, why is it that you only give them a three-choice color palette, or whatever you do with three? Why does it have to be three?
No, we don't give them a choice. It's with the single-family rentals, council adopted the design guideline that they have to create three different color schemes.
And maybe we need to look at that.
So there's different colors in there. But we don't, even though we've actually had some discussions with developers, they come to us with three different beige color schemes.
Yeah.
And we're encouraging them to use multiple colors, and it's the developers who are, and I should, not all, but many, you know, there are lots of developers coming in with cool stuff, but some of the developers are pushing against using a variety of colors. I don't know if it's the maintenance costs, or, you know, the.
It could be, but there, that being said, maybe we eventually, or we need to take a look at what we've passed, because maybe we need to have another conversation. I have had this conversation long before you came on board, Christopher. Katie has heard me tell it's a broken record, of changing the colors. Get something bright in here. I'm so tired of us looking, I live in a development that we all look alike. We've all got the same roof, we've got the same rock in our yard. The only thing different is that maybe I have a cactus and he has a bougainvillea bush. And that is so boring, and when, it may not be boring the first couple of years you live there, because you're so excited, but after 20 years, holy cow, it's awful. It really is awful. And Laura, I'm so sorry, those apartments by your place are so awful. They're just, it's like a prison. They're gray, and they do have a trim, but you can't see the trim till you drive over there. The apartments on Bullard?
You mean the one I talked about, Harvard?
By Lifetime Fitness.
Oh, behind Lifetime. Well, I know.
Yeah, they're all gray, and they do have, they do have another color, but you honest to Pete have to drive to that street to see the other color. It just looks terrible. I'm sorry. I mean, it doesn't enhance the neighborhood, let me put it nicely. That being said, too, I think multifamily housing is important. And it's interesting, because just today, I received five emails from five brand-new Pebble Creek owners, whose homes are not built, and they're looking for places to rent. And they're saying, where should I go, Wally? Where do you want me to go? And I've sent them some suggestions, because they need six months, or eight months, or 10 months until their houses are built. And sometimes they have a delay, and they don't have any place to go. We do rent in Pebble Creek, but if we own other homes, we make them rent long-term. It's not short-term. It's not month-to-month, generally. So I love having the multifamily houses, and I agree with Joe. If we can put a retail center in there, great. Or if we put retail in the bottom and apartments at the top, that's even better. I just, and I don't want to leave a lot empty if someone comes and they've got an idea, but we're saying, but the general plan says we need to do so-and-so. Let's have a conversation. I don't think anything is set in stone as far as this council. We're very open to any new ideas, because we want to keep moving forward.
Well, I've observed, so if you look at.
Mayor?
Hello, Bill?
This is Bill.
I'm sorry, Bill. I forgot about you. I have your name written down here, and I let it go. I'm so sorry. First of all, thank you very much. I know it's not always pleasant to have to come on the phone or online for these meetings. It takes a lot of extra effort, so I appreciate. So you have the floor.
No, thank you. I unfortunately wasn't able to, I missed about the first 10 minutes of conversation, but, you know, I tend to agree with Wally on a lot of what she said, on a lot of what she said, that the multifamily issue, I think Brandon said it, and Laura said it, we are constantly hearing that there's too much, too much, too much. But we've got very high occupancy rates, and they are being filled with airmen and their families, and, you know, folks from Loop that need a place, and the millennials who don't have the down payment money. The other component that we have to kind of keep in mind is, we're going to need some workforce housing, something that is affordable, that folks are going to be able to move into so that they can live closer to where they work. And I think multifamily is, at times, the answer to that, at least initially, until they can become a little bit more established. So I'm always hesitant when we try to say, you know, is council supportive of the staff approach? Because that becomes a blanket policy statement. And to Wally's point, we need to, we need to look at every opportunity that comes by with the possibility of, how's this going to fit? Excuse me. We've got, we've got a great, great opportunity in the, as we're building the city up, and multifamily of 25 or 30 years ago was not the multifamily of today. So I wholeheartedly support Wally's suggestion that we need to look at, we need to look at the different ideas. And honestly, the people who own the land, they know what's going to go there. Some of them are at it, I mean, admittedly, I think we all would agree that it's the bottom line that's really what they're after, but they also know probably better than any of the seven of us what really is going to work, and when the timing is right. I mean, they're the ones that are making the investment. So I'd like to hear from them if they've got something that kind of works along that line. I was surprised by the statistics that were provided regarding the percentage. And when you look at, when you look at Chandler, I'm going to go to that slide, when you look at, so you're not having to do it, I'm sorry. Mesa, Chandler, and somebody made the point, we're not a college town, so we're not going to have 50% of apartments. That's correct. But when you look at Mesa and Chandler, where areas that we're trying to compete with and where the job market is, that's the, I'm not saying that's the target, but that's about the neighborhood that we're playing in. And I think you'll see an increase in Peoria. The problem, I think, the challenge that Peoria has is they're more landlocked in the closer core of Peoria, and most of their new development is going up north, and that becomes not good territory, because it's farther away from the workplaces, et cetera. So, you know, I think we're on a good track with this, and I'll end there. Thank you.
Anybody else before I talk? Okay. The one thing that I'd like an answer to, so we agree, I agree with them to build apartments right along I-10, but some of those home sites or some of that land is deep. So it means we've got two things to figure out, okay, is what do we do? Because commercial can only go so deep.
That's right.
I mean, you look at our Walmart, where that is, that's pretty deep, but I'm not sure some of the others. I know, I was approached recently, you all may have been Roach, I don't know, about building, and the developer wants to put a few businesses with the houses behind them. I think that works really well, and I think that it helps neighborhoods. Most of our neighborhoods don't have a coffee place or anything that they enjoy. I just know our neighborhood one, the Sweet Shop is, and that's such.
Sugar and Spice.
Sugar and Spice. That is such a popular little area for the meat, and the hair, massage, you name it. And I know that's hard to get developers to build. The other thing is that it's interesting on the comment about your apartment complex, is that you're looking at Great Hearts. It's gray, but they used all tones of gray. And it would seem to me that would have been the ultimate one for that sitting back there. And they have, they actually could paint it now. I mean, there are things, there are spaces in there, much like Pebble Creek used to be. They used to have all the same color, and when I was on the board, I said, we need to, we need to separate, where you have the, where you have a build-out in the home that called for another color. And those apartments call for another color, if it's on the patio, if it's a pillar, or whatever it is. And, you know, that's a good, that's a good thing to point out to them. Reputation on developing and how our city thinks, and we are a little bit more upscale and picky-city than some of them maybe, but we can do that, because we have enough land, and we're, our industry is doing so well in here. So I know it has to, it's a difficult one, but I'm going to volunteer council to help when they talk to developers and lawyers. And I think we should all, as a group, express our feelings. Now, we're not going to dictate what color we mean, but we have a department that can handle that. So, and I was worried about having too many apartments, but then you did us a paper just recently, before this, and showed how many, and it showed that, no, we. recently, before this, and showed how many, and it showed that no, we, we do not have enough.
We don't.
So you have to, it's kind of a, it's kind of a difficult situation to be in. I understand.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So just to recap this portion of our presentation, what I heard is council's generally supportive of the velocity of what's going on in the multifamily arena. We have an area to continue to grow, if you will, numbers wise, in order to become similar to Mesa and Chandler and to continue to work with the development community in evaluating parcels as they come forward. And push on colors.
2005, when I got on this council, the big thing was no residents along the highway. That's going to be all commercial. That was the thing. We're going to put car dealerships, we're going to do everything, but we're not putting, and so you know, we've really, we've really moved. And I guess we moved because it's always market driven. And so we're kind of stuck with the market sometimes, so.
Absolutely. And on, on the freeway question, exactly right, is if it can't be commercial, multifamily is the next best thing and not very supportive of single family next to the freeways.
But we appreciate you and we trust you. And, and you don't sit around the table like that. If you haven't sold homes or if you haven't done that thing, when you have the developer on the other side of the table from you, it is a difficult, because you don't want to end the conversation, you want to continue a conversation. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you for that. So we're going to pivot to our next topic, which is vacant commercial corners. Throughout the city's development history, corners of varying sizes have been zoned and reserved for future commercial development. The example on this picture is one that the, we and the council recently dealt with. This is at Van Buren and Saraval. That northwest corner was reserved for commercials, about 10 or 12 acres, if you recall, and it was rezoned for multifamily. There are approximately 27 vacant commercial corners in the city that go from the Aguafria River on the south up to Camelback on the north. And since the nature of commercial development is certainly in flux, I think everybody recognizes that, the question is, is what should happen with these corners? So the size of these corners offers a glimpse into the amount of commercial development that you could expect to be constructed on them. And this is all based on national data from the International Council of Shopping Centers. On the smaller sized parcels between three and six acres, you could expect neighborhood convenience services, small scale neighborhood, neighborhood oriented, commercial and, and service type delivery of between 30 and 125,000 square feet. On a larger parcel, such as between 10 and 40 acres, it was, has a much, larger intensity of commercial development, could include something like a grocery store, things of that nature, a small grocery store. And those are typically, have a commercial square footage of a, of between 125 and 400,000 square feet. So this is a map that we put together that shows the location of all, all the vacant commercial corners. There's approximately 324, if you add all these up, 324 acres of, of commercial corners that are currently vacant in the city. And again, there are 27 of them. Lori?
Thank you, Christopher. One of the things that we asked ourselves, and I believe the council has even brought that up, is if we have vacant commercial corners, what can be done with them? And so what I, the next several slides will show you some of the commercial corners that we currently have today and what is being done with them or has been done with them. And so since our commercial corners are up to 49 acres, there'll be a variety of different examples. So if you want to go back to once, the last slide, the first slide that we saw was Pebble Creek and the dots that are on the maps coincide with what Katie was talking about, black being already built multifamily, red is zoned and green is in process. The Hudson Commons is about 14 and a half acres. You all are familiar with that because that's where Culvers is and some boroughs are going in there. We have multifamily on several corners. It's a good traffic count, but it is 14 and a half acres and there's still a lot of room for development. I'd also like to point out that right now we are about 93,000 in population. We are extremely fast, fast growing community. And as the community develops, there's going to be a need for commercial corners. As you can see, some of these commercial corners are now just developing because our population is growing, not just with a single family residential, but also with multifamily residential. And so there will be additional need for some geographically strategically located commercial corners. Next slide, please. This is an interesting corner. You all are familiar with that. That's where Dignity Health Emergency Room is. We also have the Sonic Drive-In that came in, Australia Women's Health Center that was just developed. But interestingly enough, the healthcare industry sector is booming very, very rapidly in the city of Goodyear. And for example, the Australia Women's Health Center was developed on a two acre parcel. And the Dignity Health Emergency Room was developed on a commercial corner that was only one and three quarters acres, so it was under two acres. So there's a lot of development that could potentially take place on even the smaller commercial corner lots. Next slide, please. This is very interesting. The Palm Valley office, we typically think of commercial corners as only restaurants or shopping centers. This particular commercial corner is under seven acres. This is one of our, one of our only Class A office buildings and it was developed on a less than seven acre parcel. It is nicely located and not only is it nicely located, it is a very nice looking building and certainly has a lot of interest in filling it up. We don't have a whole lot of Class A office space left in the city of Goodyear and, and people are very interested in going into corners like this, but we just don't have the space available for them. This office building is nearly full. Next slide. This is an interesting location of a commercial corner. Again, it's under seven acres and this was an extremely wise use of this particular piece of, of land. Again, not retail, not service oriented like we would think of coffee shops or, or retail stores. But the Southwest Kidney Institute and DeVita Kidney Care developed on this corner. It doesn't have a whole lot of traffic count, but again, it's another medical user and we continue to get increase, increases in inquiries from developers looking at building medical and certainly on strategic corners, that is a very good use of commercial corners.
So Mayor, Council, our approach has generally been to be supportive of future commercial development opportunities and being patient. And so we wanted to check in with Council to see if you all share that same approach.
Counsel? Wally?
Define patient. What do you mean patient? I'm sorry.
Do you want to answer that?
That's important.
Yes, the, one of the, the comments that I made is, is we're a fast growing community. Currently we have 93,000 people. And if you remember, in the past 24 months, we have seen about 63 new restaurants or retailers come into our community. Even during the time of COVID, we continue to grow and we continue to get interest from developers that are bringing in amenities that our residents want. And it is, it is a matter of time and a matter of growth of our housing and our population on when these commercial corners will develop. First, you have to have, you have to have what I call heads in beds. You have to have houses where, where people are and then the commercial and the retail follow. It's a very interesting trend. Right now, we're also getting a lot of interest in the medical office. And so some of these sites that are now empty, we are certainly having discussions on. So it doesn't really answer your question.
Does not answer my question. I have no problem with you talking to folks, but I don't, I'm not in favor of you holding a piece of property 25 years like we've done the mall, but we were, we're locked in a development agreement, we can't do anything with it. And having it empty all that time when perhaps something else could go in there. It's interesting, you know, we're the king of the hill right now. It's our land and we say what can go in and what can't go in, but I don't want to miss an opportunity. And you're right, we need people here living, we need house tops, we need, we need density and I understand that. But then we also need to go after certain companies or restaurants or services to come into Goodyear. And, and we need to, to really be diligent in doing that. We can't just wait till they knock on our door and say, hey, you've got enough people now and I want to come to Goodyear. I don't know that that's how it's done. It may be, I don't know, but it wouldn't seem to me. But I, I really don't want us to miss an opportunity and, and I really, I'm not really even comfortable with you saying if we wait to see what can come in. I mean, you know, if the medical feels hot, get them. They're going to go to Avondale if you don't. If it's something else, if we can accommodate them, let's get them.
Christopher, go ahead. That's it. He wants to rest.
Mayor, Council, if I may clarify the question just a little bit. So on these commercial corners, oftentimes we're getting requests and pre-apps and so forth to have a conversation with the development community to change it from commercial to something else.
Yes, I know.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure.
We have a corner, remember, at Pebble Creek that was going to be commercial and it ended up where our mayor lives. So you know, for 15 years, we thought something commercial was going to come in there and it didn't.
Or a park.
Or a park. We were hoping for a park and we got the mayor's house, so we're cool. But no, I understand that, I really do. But then on the other hand, I just, I, I, I'm just, I just don't want us to miss an opportunity, Christopher and Katie, even though it may sound like a broken record. But if we don't get them, some other city's going to get them and they're going to have a service that our people need.
If I can clarify too, just so, and you probably already know this, but most of these properties are zoned C1 and C2, so they do allow retail, office, medical office, all those are allowed uses. So there wouldn't need, you know, someone came in wanting to do a medical office, they can, you know, they wouldn't have to do any kind of rezoning. It's, it's really the crux of some of these requests to go to multifamily.
Well, be open if they do come for multifamily or something else and have a conversation with me, be a better fit. You know, things have changed since we have done our general plan. The whole landscape is different now. That's all I can say. Sorry.
Laura?
Well, it wasn't that long ago you brought the rezone to us for the, one of the slides you showed us for Saraval and Van Buren, and it did make sense to put multifamily there. So I think you're doing a good job evaluating on a case by case basis. I know that, you know that our heart is for more commercial and retail and things, but in areas where perhaps that's, doesn't make the best sense, then I certainly want you to exercise your professional discretion and, and see what can be done, what's the best use.
Jerry?
I, I agree with, with where everyone's going. I, the patient, that kind of did strike out to me too. It's like, well, patient is that a year, 18 months, or is that two decades and nobody's built on it? So are they ever going to? I mean, there's pieces, we drive around the city, you're like, and then maybe that's something we should be doing more is, I know you probably do reach out to the owners of the property, what are they thinking? What are they looking at? For me, the key I think would be flexibility. Just look to see, you know, each piece is different. It's, you know, what's growing up around it is different. When we're talking about some, maybe something should be multifamily now that wasn't before, like that one parcel that Laura just brought up, you know, is it Seraphina the name of that one apartment that's got the commercial right around it, right by the post office? You know, I see that I think is a great mix where they've got a lot of the commercial with the pizza place, and I think that's good when you build the multifamily there. The multifamily's kind of hidden back there and then the people that live there got a little pizza place or a donut shop to go to. That's not, you know, a huge strip mall. So I think we can look at these on an individual basis and kind of each parcel, like I said, is different. And what it was 10 years ago is maybe not what showed up around it now and what the development is around it. So I just think you guys do a great job and just flexibility is the key. And no more brown.
Somebody, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm very similar. You don't want to pass up on some opportunities, but at the same time, a little bit of flexibility. I know some places that may have the corner where maybe possibly multifamily won't work because of the demand for the traffic and the flows and what's behind it. I, I, I think you would bring these things kind of to us to say what possibly could fit, especially if somebody comes before you and has something that they want to put on there. So I don't want to pass up on any opportunities in there, but again, at the same time, depends on who wants to offer what in there. We can't say, well, you got to put this here or that there. They're not willing to develop it there, then it isn't going to happen. You know what I mean? But the one you had mentioned before, the kidney, I thought that was a perfect location for that. And it was a little slow and growing, but if you drive by it now, their patients are up there. And we did the tour of the place and I tell you, it's something that's needed in the community. It has the dialysis and then also kidney care, which are people that are driving long ways to get that, now they have one in the neighborhood. So anything we can get, for me, I'm always kind of partial to medical because I think that's where a lot of the industry is going in the future, whether it's office or some type of labs or some type of places where you go to get tested or whatever the case may be. You can't force them on the corner, but I, I would be open to listening to some of those opportunities.
Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I thought you called on me when you said Joe. Now it's me confusing me and Joe. But you know, I, I think the, again, I'm concerned about this word patience and I, I think I'm echoing what has been said a couple of times. Patience can mean we're going to hold out until we get something that we think is appropriate or patience can be, you know, let's, let's not rush to the first thing that comes. And, and it's a fine line between the two. I, I am concerned about the holdout approach. And I, I think I'm going to, I'm going to use an example of the commercial parcel off of Litchfield Road just north of Palm Valley. It's like the only vacant land that's up in that area and I think we all know what we're, what we're talking about. It's greater than six acres, but I think it's right around 10, maybe 11 acres. It's a fairly small commercial parcel. It's almost not, it's not big enough for multifamily from a, for a big complex, something a little bit smaller. But it's too big for a neighborhood commercial. So it's one of those things that, you know, when it was zoned a million years ago, it was a good idea and here we are in 2021 and it may not be as, as great. I know that there's a developer who's looking at that for a 55 and older rental community. That's a good transition from a commercial to a multifamily because it's something that nobody else has. And it would be something that, that would be, fit into the motif of what we think Goodyear, we think Goodyear looks like. But then there are other commercial sites that, I was looking at the, at the numbers. We've got six that are classified as of the 27, six that are classified as neighborhood convenience and 21 that are classified as these commercial corners. And that's a lot of different opportunities. Some are too small and, and some quite frankly are too big because we all know that retail has changed in the last 10 years anyway, if not longer. So I, I think when we talk about patience, patience sounds like, well, we're going to hold out until we get the big commercial retail center that we want. And that may never come. So when that never comes, then what, what have we done? How many opportunities have we passed by because we were quote unquote being patient? So I'm hesitant to, to, to jump on the, on the train of what does patience look like? Just with those, with those two examples. I know it's a struggle in the development community for, for hitting, you know, for the quick hit, because that's where again, the money is, as opposed to what is going to work for us. I, I share the, again, Wally and I are in the same boat tonight.
That's scary.
I shared the concern and frustration that. Yeah, exactly. The, the frustration that it's going to go somewhere else. And, and there is a lot of development that's going on in the city of Avondale with retail space and a lot of little, small, quick service restaurants. with retail space and a lot of little, uh, small, quick service restaurants going up in that 103rd and McDowell area that, uh, their population has not grown like our has, like ours has. But that area has developed significantly in the last few years. And we are not seeing, uh, we can talk about the number of businesses that have, the small sandwich places that have come in, but all they're doing is filling existing space. If you look at our, at our commercial construction, we're not seeing a lot of it. And, and I think we need to ask ourselves, has, is it something that we have done? Have we put council, have we put policies and things in place? Or is it the staff that is quote unquote being patient and waiting for something bigger? I don't know the answer to that. And I just kind of say that rhetorically in hopes that maybe someone will answer that question themselves and wonder what role we have in that. But that, that becomes my concern about patience. Is all of that stuff is going to go somewhere else? And then there's not a reason for them to build it in Goodyear. So now we're going to be left with, the only viable thing for the landowner is to put a multifamily site there. And we're going to end up with Tempe's rate of multifamily because there's nothing left to go. And, and I'm really concerned about patience. And there's a very fine line there, um, as, as we go forward. So this has been a great discussion and I'm anxious to hear what, uh, everyone else has to say as, as we finish this up.
Thank you, Bill. Brandon?
Yeah, I mean, I echo Bill's concerns as well. I mean, I want to make sure the right use is in the right place. I mean, these commercial corners, we only have a limited supply of them. Once they're gone, they're gone. So we should make sure what the best use is for that area. I like being on the air of patience. I mean, if there are businesses right now that want those places, obviously, I'm, I would, I would like to think that staff and, and, uh, ECT Dev are definitely encouraging those uses to be in those places and helping them come to, come to Goodyear. So, yeah, I'm not sure, uh, why we don't have more in those areas. If it's a density, like you said, I think we're the 10th largest city now in Arizona. So, um, yeah. So I know we can't commercial on every single corner in Goodyear, but just being wise on and understanding what the best use is for those locations. I, I'm reminded of, I think Litchfield Park, they weren't going to put that fries off of Camelback. And then people said, you should put residential there. And then they said, we're going to wait. And then they have a fries there now. And it's a very busy, very busy, busy, uh, place.
They waited years to get that, so.
Yeah, they did, they waited. So, not that I'm saying we're going to have a fries on every of these, every corner here, because that is, that's not practical. But just, just being patient with, in to degree. I mean, to Bill's point, yeah, some uses might be better for multifamily or other things. But like I said, we have a limited supply, just like we have a limited supply of I-10 or freeway space too. So, thank you.
We have a six o'clock meeting, but I'd like to make one point. So that land's owned by other landowners, developers. Is there a way that we could, uh, come across with some kind of suggestion and plan? Something that we think that would really be worthwhile there? Or people that come in, uh, with businesses and really don't know where they can go? Or, uh, could we do some kind of partnership with develop, in, in concert, helping them develop those corners? And maybe we'll find out why they're sitting on them so long. I don't know. But I think we need to start working the corners, like, almost like we own them, you know? And use that mentality to see what, you know, we have to try something, see what happens. We need to go to our meeting at six o'clock. So, and there's something else, you're, I'm looking at you, you went like this, so. What?
We were proposing however, that we adjourned the work session to complete it after the meeting.
Okay.
Recession, excuse me, thank you.
All right, we're going to just, do I need a motion for that? No, okay. So we're going to adjourn this work session and we'll come back to it later this evening because we need to in five minutes start the regular meeting. So thank you very much, this meeting's adjourned.
So we could have this discussion and sure we're on the same page with counsel because there's been interest expressed to us through pre apps and things of that nature for warehouse logistical type development along Bullard in between Van Buren and I-10. And so we, again, we just wanted to check in with counsel, have a conversation, seek some direction from you regarding your vision for this segment of the, of the city as well.
Thank you. So this area is designated as business and commerce by the general plan, which allows for a variety of uses, commercial, lighter industrial, as well as some multifamily. And then Van Buren does have the TOD overlay, which encourages higher intensity employment or higher density residential. And then of course, there's policies encouraging higher dense, higher intensity employment and intensity in taller buildings along Interstate 10. In terms of zoning, and I, I'm going to focus east of Bullard Avenue. Um, I think that's kind of our focus tonight. This area was zoned in 2007. And the development of Cancer Treatment Centers of America is what prompted the rezoning of this entire area. And, you know, the vision for that was that development like CTC A would surround the area. However, um, you know, and as you can imagine, when we were doing the CTC A deal, we were trying to move the zoning through quickly. And so there's a unique zoning condition on this property. The CTC A area was designated as final PAD, but the rest of the land is preliminary PAD. And we used to see that a lot, but we don't see it too often because we don't use that zoning too much anymore. And what that preliminary PAD means is just that it was a preliminary zoning designation. No matter what they want to develop, they do have to go through another zoning action because it's preliminary. They can't develop the property as anything really right now because they have to go through this final zoning. Um, and basically our zoning ordinance was set up with this two-stage process that we've kind of gone away from. But back in 2007, we were using it. And one of the reasons we used it on this property back in 2007 is because we didn't get a real detailed vision from the applicant of what the whole area would be. And we were not in full agreement on what all the uses should be. So we compromised and designated the balance of the land as preliminary so we could work on it later. The preliminary zoning does allow warehousing and distribution uses. However, preliminary zoning per the zoning ordinance is only meant to be in place for two years. They're supposed to come in and get final zoning in those two years. But it doesn't automatically go away. It would take a council action to revert it. And staff hasn't come to council to ask to revert these zonings, especially since so many of these, you know, the, the recession in 2007, eight, nine caused development delay on a lot of these properties. However, it should be noted that since that original approval, um, you know, we've had, adopted a new general plan. And then you'll, you'll hear Lori talk about some things such as we designated the, um, foreign trade zones, which didn't include this property. We designated this area as a central business district. Um, and then also there's been development changes such as our change in vision for Bullard Avenue south of Van Buren. Civic squares moved to not too far away from this property. And that's part of the reason the preliminary PAD isn't meant to be in place for more than two years because a growing community like Goodyear changes over time.
Thank you. I am going to share a little bit with you about the current state of what's happening in industrial as well as what's happening in the office industry sector, just to give some perspective of what is happening in Goodyear and what is happening surrounding us as well. So we have had, no surprise to anybody here, we've had a lot of industrial come into our community as well as a lot of industrial speculative buildings being built. So the total square feet of industrial that has been constructed in 2020 is 6.4 million square feet. Currently under construction is an additional 4.5 million square feet. And we anticipate, based on what has come in and through the process or working through the process, we anticipate another 6 million square feet of industrial construction, most of that speculative buildings, to start construction in 2021. Right now, we have approximately, uh, we're trying to get the square feet, you know, apples to apples. So we have 4,800 acres, which equals 209 million square feet of either already zoned industrial property or in the general plan that is designated for industrial type uses. Now, the, the, as, as we all know, 100% of that is not covered. In other words, we don't cover 100% of an acre. So if we take about, um, if we take about approximately a 40% coverage, the additional acreage can accommodate today, can accommodate approximately 83, 83 million additional square feet of industrial. And so that just sets the stage of where we stand today. Of course, as we all know, things change, things can change rapidly, but this is where we are today. The bottom arrow is a little bit about some timelines of what happened. You know, why, why is industrial blossoming today in Goodyear? What has happened to make that blossom like it is today? And that was because of a lot of things that have happened through the action of the city council. I would say it's very well planned and very well orchestrated. And a lot of those actions that some of you have been on the council for a while are very familiar with. And just let me give you an example. So for example, Katie mentioned that, that, uh, south of Van Buren, we have designated a magnet foreign trade zone site. Well, there were three foreign trade zone sites that were designated in the city of Goodyear. We started the process in Jul-, in July of 2009 and it was finalized the next year in 2010. Again, we're prepping for what we want and what the desire is. If you remember what the economy was like in 2009, uh, it was, it was a really challenging time, not just for Goodyear, but the, the entire area. And so we wanted to use a variety of tools to help develop some of these properties. In 2011 and 2012, Sub Zero activated the, the magnet site and that was up over the PV 303. But again, it took the, it took us to take action in 2009 in order for that to take place. The, uh, 2014, the airport gateway infrastructure was completed. And that is the one, uh, the, the industrial park just south of Van Buren that today is full. And we'll talk about that in, in a little bit. So it was a lot of prep work ahead of time before we actually saw some of this coming out of the ground. And in 2015, there were, a couple of things happened. Uh, 2014, we had infrastructure going in there and it was already designated as a foreign trade zone magnet site. And so, um, you can see in 2018 to present why we're called the golden age of industrial development here in Goodyear. But again, it took about five or six years to get us, get everything prepped. Next slide, please. And this is just a graphic of what has happened. So, um, the top is 2015 when, uh, the infrastructure, the roadway was going in. To today, it is 100% sold out and it has also spurred some industrial adjacent. But it was a five or six year, I would say lag time before we started saying, okay, what do we need to spur the type of development in this already zoned, um, industrial park? Mike Lewis was the first one that came into that park. And as you can see, it's been very highly successful. I'd like to talk a little bit about the office market. So this is what's happening in the industrial market in Goodyear today. Next slide, please. And this is a picture of our area where our city hall will be. And that is a picture of the rendering of some Class A office and our city hall. So why, why office, why office in Goodyear? We know that, that office has a high wage. Uh, most of the time we'll bring in high wage. It also helps us increase daytime population and diversifies the economy. As you all have shared with us, uh, you said, we, we don't want to get overly saturated in one sector, but we do want a well-rounded community. And, um, and so one of the reasons that you all entered into a public-private partnership was to help spur some of that development into Class A. And why should we do this in Goodyear? As you all know, we have a highly educated population. Currently, we have about 90% of our residents that are leaving Goodyear to, to work elsewhere because we don't have the type of, of office jobs that they are currently working at. And of course, uh, Goodyear is highly accessible. And so when we are on some major thoroughfares or close by major thoroughfares, it makes sense to have some sort of an office development in that corridor. And so what's the, what's the demand? We talked to Greater Phoenix Economic Council, our, our partner, and did, asked them for some information. We did some analysis internally and then asked them for some information. So in fiscal year 20, um, we got a variety of office leads from GPEC. And with, with more than 1 million square feet of office projects. That was, even through COVID, we know that they have, are still working on office projects. So in fiscal year 21, um, we've been provided with leads for more than 1 million square feet of office projects. Those leads have averaged 243 jobs per lead with an average income of about 70,000. And again, even through COVID, in fiscal year 21, GPEC has, has, is currently working on 41 active office projects. And out of those 41 active office projects, 36, obviously the bulk of them, want existing office space. Since we have very little existing office space, uh, currently today, we have less than 6,500 square feet of contiguous available Class A office space. And again, the bulk of those that are looking, the bulk of the companies, even through COVID, uh, are, are looking for existing Class A office space. So we are not, we, we have limited product and we certainly, um, uh, have limited places to, to put them. Even though we've been proposing, um, this particular project for them, we said, you know, we'll be ready in 2022. They want to be in and up and running quicker than that. The other good news, I think, for us is because we have a developer who's willing to invest in speculative Class A office, it really gives the market confidence. It shows that somebody is willing to put up significant amount of dollars. It, and it shows that there's confidence in the Goodyear market for, uh, Class A office demand. Next slide. This particular slide, we just, I just wanted to share with you what has happened. And you all have know this, I'm trying to just put together a synopsis for you. Um, currently, the market in the West Valley, not just in Goodyear, but in the West Valley, we have a, a lower vacancy rate than, for example, the, the downtown Phoenix area. So that tells us in the West Valley, there is certainly a need for office. We know that there has been a lot of demand, particularly for medical office space. And we have had new construction in Australia Women's Health Center, new construction with Adelante, Davita, Southwest Kidney. Uh, even the Abrazo West Campus has expanded. And the Mountain Park Health Center has signif-, has done significant expansion in the last 12 months. Goodyear needs, still needs office space, it needs medical office space. And as you all certainly know and understand and pointed out previously in our previous work session, we certainly need more retail. Uh, we are a fast-growing community and, um, next slide, please, thank you. We know that there's demand, uh, we need, uh, there's a demand for office and medical office space. And as a matter of fact, we know and understand that demand because we've had developers purchasing existing building and doing adaptive reuse. In other words, these buildings that are up there, uh, the Palm Valley Cinema, the former Maytag showroom, uh, and the furniture store that used to be a furniture store right on Litchfield, we've had developers purchase those properties and do an adaptive reuse to use it for another type of, of occupancy. And the other interesting thing is we continue to work- And the other interesting thing is, we continue to work with several developers on additional spec medical office space. Next slide, please. You know, there, there's a couple of questions, at least in our mind, when we were pulling together this presentation, that said, where else can office go, or medical office go, that, that is highly visible, that is meant to be dense employment centers, that, that has the capability to not just build office or medical office, but also have amenities and a lot of different compatible uses? This is one of those areas that we have identified for that. We know it's a very health-centric area, just simply because CTCA, Cancer Treatment Centers of America, is there. And we also know that a lot of families come into Goodyear so that their loved ones can be treated there, and we do have them staying at some of our hotels. Next slide, please. The, the previous geographical area that we showed around CTCA is approximately 225 acres. And I want to just give this to you as a comparison of what, what's happening in Gilbert right now. That's Gilbert Rivuleon, and you all may have heard about that. This particular piece of development or property is 250 acres, so very similar to the properties surrounding CTCA. And it broke ground in 2014. The goal was to have targeted, target 6,500 highway jobs at full employment. Again, a 250-acre master plan community. It currently has 800,000 square feet already built of Class A office space. It also has, very interestingly enough, on one of the frontage, it has some high-end luxury car dealers there, but also has some other amenities, not just for the office users, but for any residents in, in Goodyear who want to go to some of the restaurants that are around there. At full buildout, it is anticipated to be approximately 3 million square feet and have, again, target high-end jobs. Next slide, please. This will, will really end my portion, and would love to hear from you, I'm going to turn it back over to Christopher, on, on what your vision is for this area, because we certainly want to market the area and develop it into what you all would like to see there. Again, just giving you some perspective of where we are today, where the demand is today, and where we see the demand going tomorrow.
Tom, it's gone. Brandon?
Mayor, mayor, if I may?
Yes. Oh, and did I interrupt something? I'm so used, you're so used to me.
Just the last, just, just a question, it's quite, quite all right, thank you very much.
All right, go ahead.
So, thank you, Lori, for the information and, and the vision there along, around CTCA. And so, again, we want to have a touch point with council to see, ensure that you're supportive of our approach of having this Bullard area primarily on the east side, as Katie pointed out, as developing as something other than big-box warehouse logistic-type development, and hopefully something more akin to the medical tech office corridor that Lori was describing.
Before we start, is, all that land still belong to part of that, to Cancer Treatments of America? So off, so they don't any, own anything on?
They, they do own a portion of that, yes.
Up to the freeway.
Yeah, they, they own a portion of it, this is not a single ownership. There are several different owners, but CTCA is, is certainly one of the owners of a portion of it.
Are they thinking about developing or having someone else develop or selling it? Or, I mean, do we hear any gossip on the street?
We actually have been talking to CTCA.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'd call it gossip, but certainly, they would love to see something surround their property that would be an amenity to their patients and their, the families that are coming there, and also that would be supportive and complementary of what they're doing currently there. That is what they would like to see on their, their piece of property. And they have said, and certainly, they're the property owners, and I certainly understand that, they said, you know, we don't want just anything, we want something special there. And so we're, we're not looking for, you know, a gas station, for example. That would, would not be what we would think would be compatible to, to our operations. We'd like something that is more accessible to our patients and their families, and something that would support what they're doing.
It's interesting, because at one time, they talked about, convention center is the wrong words, but they wanted something that we could have meetings at, and they wanted things for their medical side that could put lectures and things like that. And so have they given up on that? Of course, you can't tell secrets, and I'm not going to ask you this, but you're talking about that area where?
Yes, yes. They, they have a lot of different things that they've talked about putting there, but it's all been complementary to what is currently there and what their current operations are.
All right. I have to explain, yeah. Molly?
So I just want to get it clear in my head that you're talking about the acreage between cancer treatment centers and Rudy's Barbecue on that side? Or are you talking about cancer treatment centers to Bullard, but not across Bullard? Just to Bullard?
Yeah, we're talking about, what I'm talking about is the entire 225 acres that ring Cancer Treatment Center of America, which is up on the map right there. So we're talking about both sides, the east side of Bullard, as well as the west side of Litchfield.
We're looking for council direction.
Yeah.
And vision for the whole area, but I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, I believe CTCA owns this portion?
That's, that's by Rudy's. That's where they have their, their, their garden right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then this area here from Bullard Avenue, you know, between CTCA and Bullard Avenue, this is owned by a single developer.
Person. So remember, too, that, that on 143rd Avenue, which is right on that corner where you turn in to go into the back way of CTCA, where I go in and out of the kitchen, is going to be our fire station. So we've got our fire station there, so, and beside the fire station, we have the DMV place. And so then, so seriously, I mean, on the other side, if you put in a, a big box, whatever, it wouldn't have anything to do with CTCA's side, really, because they've already got this other stuff, and that's not compatible at all to what they do or how they do it. And we can't put a bunch of medical offices around them because they would be a direct competition to CTCA, I would think. And I don't think that they think that's what their patients and their families would want to go to. So they're thinking more of perhaps restaurants or, or, not a bowling alley, but, I mean, you know, but things that they can actually do something interactive on their side. And, and I, I really don't have an answer for you, because I know that land's been vacant for as long as I've lived here, and I would like to see something there, but I don't know that we need to save that land to, to fulfill CTCA's dream when they can't even do their side.
Mayor and, and Councilmember Campbell, I'd like to clarify the ownership of the property.
Okay.
And I'm going to have Harry Paxton clarify the, the property ownership.
Yeah, just give you a little bit of a quick history.
Yeah.
The CTCA site, where the hospital is, is 25 acres, that was their original purchase.
Right.
Then they purchased the corner, about 40 acres, if you're aware of, Litchfield, over to their site. And then they made another purchase where they have the pond at. And then essentially, that 143rd cul-de-sac there, essentially that area all the way along Celebrate Lifeway over to Litch, or to Bullard Avenue.
They own.
They own. They don't own immediately on the freeway.
No, they don't own that corner.
And they don't own south of Celebrate Lifeway. That is the EJM development. So, just wanted to make sure you understand the, the ownership there. I believe, Katie, if I'm correct, that southwest corner of I-10 and Litchfield Road has final zoning for office and retail. So that one already is. The other property that we're talking about is the preliminary PAD.
Yeah, I sit on one of their boards, so I'm familiar with all the fingers and what, you know, but I don't know what they're trying to do with it, but, I don't know.
Brandon?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm curious to hear what everybody else has to say.
Brandon?
Yeah. I'm okay with, I know we're talking, not talking about the west side, the west side makes sense in between the two, the hot sauce factory and the pretzel factory to have some, a like user on that side. But I think this side, I, like I said, there's only a very small portion of I-10 real estate that Goodyear even has, being so, so, so narrow. So I've always envisioned this being something like a office, office-type user here. I know at one point, even potentially entertainment, because I know CTCA was even thinking about some kind of competitor to Topgolf at one point that was going to be here, and they were like, one vote away from making that happen. So, so yeah, so I've always thought this would be a special piece, that would be higher-end, that would be office, medical, or some sort of entertainment in that area. I'd rather not see large-box warehouses or industrial. I would, I would not prefer that. I mean, if, I don't know, I guess we do one at a time, but I'd not prefer that kind of user to be there. I'd rather have office or like medical, not competitors to CTCA, that wouldn't make any sense, cancer, but things that, that go along with the uses of the medical there as well. It seemed like all our medical users like to be along McDowell right now, because it kind of goes along, but I would like to see, yeah, the, those kind of office-type uses or entertainment-type uses there. So that's what I, I think.
Laura?
I believe we have some office north of I-10 on Bullard over by the two hotels. I believe there will be a law firm was building an office, and then across the street from that, in that mixed use, there will be some office space. So that's sort of like a entryway for that corridor. I'm, I'm with Brandon. I think that is a special piece of property that fronts I-10. I think the potential for that to become something really special, I guess this may be even where the word "patients" might be used in saying, I think we can get some good, good users there. What I think is special about south of Van Buren, our tech center, is that we branded it, and we put markers, and we've got landscaping it, so it doesn't look like every other industrial park. So I think for south of I-10, or south of Van Buren, we've done a great job. But I would envision the research medical office, something, something special for that, that property.
Cherry?
I think I agree with what everyone said. I think that's probably a good play for that land, and I, maybe we need to kind of keep up with those landlords. It sounds like you guys are going back out and kind of touching base to find out what they're doing, because it, maybe they need some prodding from us or some more, I don't know, because it's, it's like Wally said, it's been sitting there for so long, but you just don't want to put anything on it either. So I, I agree with Laura and Brandon and everyone, that I, I think that's, it'd be nice to get something along with what we were saying in that area, but I think we've got to kind of figure out what those landowners, you know, what is their intention? Do they want to hold it for 50 years? Or, you know, what is their intention? I guess that's what we need to kind of figure out, too.
Mayor and, and Councilmember Laurentano, Christopher had alluded to, to some of that. One of the, the property owners certainly has been getting approached by some big-box cross-dock facilities, which is why we're here to discuss that today. And I, I don't want to speak for, for Christopher, but that is, that is what they're inquiring about, and so we-
The CTCA property or across the street?
EJM.
If I, again, it's, was on this parcel of property between Bullard and ADOT. This is the ADOT office.
Oh, yeah.
This is where the, the new fire station is getting constructed, so it was a facility located here.
And it would face Kick-Ass Barbecue or Kick-Ass Hot Sauce Place.
So it's a little further south.
That's right. When you come off of Celebrate Way, you run right into that jackass, that donkey.
All right. And, and so as Katie was just pointing out, that they also have, they would also like to develop that same methodology, the cross-dock warehouse-type projects up and down Bullard to I-10. So that's one of the reasons that we're having a conversation with you tonight, is to make sure that we're all have, you know, a common footing.
Well, maybe they need our assistance to kind of say, that's not really where we're thinking.
Well, have you ever thought a cluster of medical? Because what Wally says about cancer treatments, I disagree. There are so many, you know, fingers off medicine.
No, they're right.
That, that even the patients that are in there, maybe a special eye problem, they're suffering from cancer, but they got, you know, so there's so much. And, you know, I thought we were getting kind of a cluster over by Abrazo, and I was real thrilled about it. But I think that that's what this needs, and with a Class A office building, that would certainly start smaller medical. And I do not think, I think we should go for it and block what's looking at it. It's not effective for there. We've got the data centers, which are really more sophisticated, right? When you have to stop and think about it. And no, I think we've got a chance of doing something big with this, and I think because we have an anchor, which is cancer treatments, usually, right, they say it takes an anchor to attract all that. Well, we've got it right there, so I don't think we should waste that.
And I think we should go full forward with that.
Joe?
You know, the sad part about it, and I don't know, you've probably been talking to them, I, I got the feeling that they're going through some type of transformation over there anyway, as far as mergers or whatever. You know, I don't, I don't know what all the finance is, but they're going through something over there. But there's nothing for the patients in that area to do. I know there was a time when the cancer, cancer patients liked to go to the, what was it, Fry's? They would, they would take a ride down to Fry's, where some of us are walking, they'll get some food or get some things to, you know, but that, that now is what Goodwill. So if you look around that area, there's nothing for those cancer patients to do, and trust me, the, their place in there with what they call a cafeteria really isn't that great. So, I've been there, okay? This is my personal opinion. So it would be nice if there was some things there for the patients, you know, to do, and I don't know what that answer is, I don't know what cancer treatment centers would like to see there for the patients to do. I know medical is always great to have those clusters, I agree with you there, mayor, but it would be nice if somewhere close by, there was something for them to do, you know what I mean? Especially-
A Class A office building with the facility down the main level.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just something, it would be nice for them, for something to do.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, you don't have to-
Yeah, little shops or something, you know, for them, something where they can take their worries and go close by, and maybe a little shop or whatever the case may be. That would be kind of nice for the patients. I'm sure we'd perk them up. Yeah, just to get out.
I'm saying Fry's Starbucks is on one of those corners.
Mayor?
Yes.
Really? Bill?
Yes, Bill?
Okay, sorry, everyone's fading in and out on volume, so it was hard to tell if you were-
That's right, so am I, Bill, don't worry about it.
Am I free to speak?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, just in the last few minutes, we've spent a great deal of time talking singularly about the Cancer Treatment Center's property, which is great, but it's their property. So if they don't want to put an office building in there, and they want to put in a, you know, a walking park, you know, a stone garden or something, that, you know, I guess is their, their call. And if they want to, if they want to do that, are we going to tell them no? So we've been, you know, we walk, I think, a very dangerous road when we start dictating to any property owner what they should do on it. Do, are there things that we don't want there? Probably. But I, I just kind of collectively look at that. I've got a few questions, just generically, because the beginning of this presentation started out with, you know, this industrial, you know, piece. So, you know, just an observation that, you know, keeping in mind that not all industrial is bad, much like not all multifamily is bad. Internet fulfillment centers, which are a revenue source for us, is an industrial, industrial user. uh, industrial user. I think, and Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think data centers are also classified as industrial, are they not?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Stiff, I didn't quite hear your question, but, um, yes, data centers are considered industrial.
So, and we're, we're getting through that, and, and a semiconductor manufacturing facility would also be industrial, would it not?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, we're, you know, we're looking at opportunities, uh, in the classification that we're kind of stamping with a not industrial. And that, and there's, there's degrees of industrial, there's degrees of multifamily, there's degree. So, I, I know staff wants to walk away with, well, council said never industrial, or not this, um, that, much like the patients thing, we, I think collectively, we've got to just be careful on. Um, as far as the Class A office space, um, we've not heard from anybody about really the region's capacity to sustain a lot of Class A office space. Um, we see high-rise development in Tempe of a lot of Class A office space. We obviously have downtown Phoenix. Um, so, where is that gonna go? How, how is the fulfillment of the Civic Square Class A office space going? Uh, we're not seeing the construction of the Class A, or it may have been even B, office space that's supposed to go north of I-10 and east of Bullard, uh, as far as the filling of that space. So we have this dream of what, of what Class A office space should be, but the reality may be something completely different. Um, so I, I, from my perspective, I hope that staff doesn't walk away with concrete, that they walk away with, um, kind of some mud. And mud hardens over time, but it can also be watered back down and changed into something else. Um, I know it's a crummy analogy, but that's kind of where I'm at. Um, and the last question that I have, um, is really about the smaller office parks. I think of the office space across from the community park, across from the fire station off of Litchfield, there's one that went up behind, uh, just west of Litchfield off Thomas, that was zoned that way, one building went up, and then nothing else went. We've got a lot of vacancy in those places, along Bullard, at Indian School, and off of McDowell at 145th, I think.
By the bank, the corner of the bank.
Um, how, how are we at with occupancy in those places when we start having this dream of a lot of office space?
I, I will say, Bill, on this, on that office space, it is a difference inside. All right? Um, you know, Mayor Shoff had his, um, office in that area, and I've been to several of them. And so the buildings themselves inside, um, could be something, but they all need to be redone and modernized and enlarged. Um, and, and so I, I would, you know, I, I'm not against what you said. I think we have a combination things that we're gonna have to do. Uh, but there are reasons for the vacancies in some of those places. It's not, uh, just, just because we can't get the people, we can't get the businesses. But, um, if you, if you go to where I have my eyes done, I mean, you go in there, and it's, it's not going to, you know, rent at a high rate and, and, um, cost, because it just isn't. The building could be redone. The outside looks great, but it's inadequate for anything that we would call an office space that would be probably one that would be continuously rented, uh, for a developer. But I really was, I think it's gonna take a combination. So I'm not against what you're saying about industry, and, um, but I think we have to be smart in our choices, so we don't look like the old-fashioned industry. And can be a little bit more sophisticated and, and take some other, uh, opportunities.
And Mayor, I think that's exactly what I'm trying to say, is not all industrial is bad. Not, everything has to be Class A. We can drive a lot of that look and feel for our community by design standards. Um, I think we're saying the same thing, we're probably just saying it entirely differently. But, um, I, I agree with, uh, we've got places that Class A office space probably would work better. Um, certainly around Civic Square, certainly, uh, that area, uh, McDowell, between McDowell and I-10, from Bullard to 145th, or Bullard to, um, uh, yeah, 145th, that general area around Lifetime Fitness, et cetera. We've got places that, that would work, but we have to be open to the suggestion by the, A, the people that own the property, or B, the people that are gonna pay and develop it. That's all I'm saying. And I'm done. Thank you for listening.
Well, I guess it's, looking at it, it's probably very difficult for you. Um, but when, uh, in my view, when, uh, businesses come in, or, you know, developers want to do something, there's nothing wrong with pushing hard toward one that might fit in that area better. And if you look at industry, you gotta look at what type of industry they want to put in there. And, um, again, it's kind of limited in traffic, uh, and, um, large trucks. Um, so I think we have to be careful. Um, and I know we can't tell them what to do, uh, but we do have some handle on it. And, and I, and the thing of it is, I think they, everybody wants to be successful. So, you know, try to, we try to recommend what we feel, or the city feels, might be more successful for them. Because we want, like we say, want every business to succeed. So, it is a mixed bag, and I don't know how much information you really got from us tonight. Um, well, you didn't get a definite answer from us. But we did give you enough to come back on something.
Yeah. Mayor, Council, thank you for, uh, entertaining us with this conversation and, and letting us be a part of it. If I can just kind of summarize my notes on this portion here, and please correct me if I misspeak, but generally, it sounded as if council had a vision for, um, if it is industrial, the high, high design industrial, but really would, uh, be more preferred to see, um, office, something complementary to CTA, CTC, things of that nature. But be flexible and open to an off, to an industrial project, and then have high design standards.
Because we really don't have a cluster in that. If you look at the office building you show on, on, um, Litchfield and McDowell, you know, really super big one, that's it. We really don't have anything in our city that is a more upscale, will bring the dentists in, bring the doctors in, and things like that. So, uh, I'm done. Thank you.
I'd like to see, if we don't get an office building-
Can we talk into the mics? I'm sorry, Bill's having a little bit of trouble hearing us. So if we could talk into the mics for him, he just let me know.
I was leaning back in the chair. Being lazy.
I didn't hear what she said, but I-
No, you have to get closer to the microphone.
Yeah. I said that I am not necessarily in favor of a high-rise office building, but I think we need to take every proposal to us seriously and figure out if in fact it can work, or if not, suggest something else. They can always take their chance to come before council, too, and we can always say no. I mean, I hate to, like I say, they may go somewhere else. But if CTC is concerned about, or wanting us to be the first out of the gate to build something, I, I don't know that I've, I'm, I really like that scenario. Uh, other than they might have come to you, and I, I don't know.
What do they ask for something?
Well, did, did they come to us and say, this is what they wanted, or did we go to them? I mean, how did they get into this equation? Seriously.
Mayor Lord and, and Councilmember Campbell, we always keep in touch with our property owners, and so we always have a conversation with them. And certainly, we want to make sure we understand what their vision is, and how we can help work with them to make that vision move forward. And, uh, and so that's how we started that conversation with them. But even before I came on board, um, the Economic Development Staff was in continuous contact with CTC about, um, their operations, and how they're doing, and how we might support them. So, uh, all of our, you know, a lot of our property owners, we are in a continuous conversation with them. Um, and that's, when you say, how did we get started, it wasn't a, you know, we picked up the phone one day, but we are always building those relationships.
We may not be able to get something that they really want on that property either. Do we leave it empty forever? I mean, what do we do? I know that's what you want us to tell you what to do, but I can't tell you what to do, because I really don't know. And unless we know what is specifically being proposed, how can we make a judgment?
So what we were asking is, is we've had some pre-apps for cross-dock logistical warehouse development.
Like UPS?
We don't know the user.
Is that across, is that across the?
Yes, something like that, the building like that, yes. We don't know users, because there hasn't been any users identified. These were speculative industrial, um, developers who were seeking to come in to talk to us about, um, cross-dock facilities there. So we, before, before we-
And we're talking about the same, uh, business that's on Camelback, it's coming on Camelback, is that correct?
Yeah, um, so it's businesses-
Not the same company?
Like, like, buildings like that, or, or, frankly, the, the Nike building is a cross-dock warehouse, or, um, you know, things like that are all cross-dock warehouses.
Hopefully you can show them other property in Goodyear that's available and-
Correct.
Going that way.
Correct.
And then they're still staying in Goodyear.
Correct.
Good, okay. Wow.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes, Bill?
Mayor, if I, if I can jump in and ask Christopher this question.
Sure, go ahead.
Chewy.com, which is an internet fulfillment, is that considered a cross-dock?
Uh, yes, sir.
And that's a great building.
So, here, here we have this quote-unquote, "single definition." Chewy.com is a revenue generator for the city, where UPS is simply a transfer of, uh, product back and forth. And they're both exactly the same. So, again, we say no cross-dock, but we could be turning away a revenue source. Um, and I, so I think that becomes the, the $10,000 question is, how do we clarify that and give the staff enough direction? So I think to Wally's point, we probably need, need to have some more information before we give a blanket yes or no.
Mayor, may I, may I make a comment?
Yes.
And I think to that point, the pre-app on the, this property was for a speculative cross-dock. So you'd be in the position of having to approve that land use without knowing who that end user might be. So, this is certainly a very complicated, um, you know, land use conversation. We appreciate the time that you've, you've taken to have it with us tonight.
I appreciate that information. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, before we close out tonight, if, if you wouldn't mind indulging me, I think it's, um, the previous conversation, slide 12, with the 27 commercial corners. Um, I know we, we, we were talking about it, and then we had to adjourn to go to the regular meeting. But, there are those four corners on Yuma and Australia Parkway that, that there was once a vision for. And so, are we looking at those corners sort of comprehensively, or are we just looking at them sort of like, well, each one is a separate entity? Because it was, it had a vision before. And are we looking at it, I'm just curious how we're viewing that.
So, Mayor, Councilmember Kano, thank you for the question. We had, um, after Civic Square, um, became real, and has legs, and is moving forward definitively, we had reached out to, um, the property owner there, because they were a partner with the city in terms of establishing the, the city center vision and so forth, which I know the mayor and Councilmember Lauritano certainly know a whole lot more about that than I do, um, from their previous years and effort. I've heard Councilmember Lauritano say her oldest daughter, or youngest daughter is now, yeah, anyway. Um, the, the point being is that we had proactively reached out to them to express an opportunity to partner with them, to re-envision that area, maybe figure out what they wanted to see, how it could benefit the city, and how we could work together to make that happen. We did reach out, had those conversations, um, spoke with them and their legal representation, and, um, you know, right now, that ball is sort of in their court. Um, we had made that offer, and I think they're working through some different property, uh, ownership transitions and things of that nature. But, we have made, we have made, uh, contact with them about that.
Okay, I wondered, because it really, it looks to be a very strategic corner as well. Um, so big things can happen there, I'm sure. Thank you.
All right, is the conversation pretty finished? Um, I know you did really get a long line of ideas, and, uh, so you're still going to have to do your research, and who knows? You've been good at everything else you've done. I, I have confidence in all of you, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I closed the book on myself, so. All right, this ends the meeting. I'm just looking to see what the next meeting will be. Maybe the city clerk can tell us.
On February 1st, it'll be a work session, beginning at 5:00 PM.
I'm sorry, what?
It'll be a work session on February 1st, beginning at 5:00 PM.
Great, thank you very much. With no other business, this meeting's adjourned.
Bill Sip.
Is now exiting.